June council work session and regular council meeting in order. Would everybody please rise for a moment's silence? And let's remember a friend of mine, a longtime crossing guard and sewer authority member, Franny Dorenzo, who passed away over the weekend. Please salute the flag.
The United States of America is to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into our regular meeting, we have a couple people here tonight from different organizations. So I'm going to bring up Amy, if you and Ken want to go to the podium. No, the theater. Oh, babies. I didn't realize that, Amy.
Hello, good evening. We're Amy and Ken Kesar from the Bristol Riverside Theater. We are the co-producing directors of a professional regional theater right here in Bristol Borough. We're very proud to be part of this community and to provide professional world-class theater to this community. We believe that if you live in Bristol Borough, you should have complete access to the arts. There is no excuse for not having availability of professional theater to you if you live here. We, to that end, we offer five-dollar tickets to the first two performances of every show we do on Tuesday and Wednesday nights of every run. We want to encourage as many people as possible to come out and take advantage of this. It's our way of making sure that everybody's included and everybody has access to the arts here in Bristol. And the subsidies that we get with, from this council, helps to make that possible. So thank you very much for your support and thank you for serving the people of Bristol Borough in this way.
This year, 493 people took advantage of those five-dollar tickets. And because of pandemic planning, there was one fewer show in the season. So that is the most in any year that has ever taken advantage of this, which we are really excited about. The total cost of subsidizing those tickets is just shy of $20,000. $19,720 was the actual subsidy this year. And we're incredibly grateful to the council for your participation in funding part of that and matching what Bristol Riverside Theater does. We, it is, it has been a obviously challenging few years for theater to shut down an entire industry and then reopen it. And so to know that in the year in which we did that, the most people ever took advantage of these tickets and want to come and want to participate is really exciting to us and we're looking forward to expanding that, that program. And, yeah.
While we have people watching at home, we're starting our 2023 William Penn Bank Summer Music Fest this Wednesday with the Rhinestone Cowgirls. We've got a full summer filled with great musical acts, including Motown, including Jimmy Buffett, including all kinds of great music that everyone's going to love. So come, listen to some music and enjoy the summer with us with the William Penn Bank Summer Music Fest, starting this Wednesday, going all summer long. Check out the offerings at BRTstage.org.
Okay.
Thank you.
So councilwoman, Betty Rodriguez.
You forgot me after 20 years. 20 years, you believe this?
Amy, if you want to come forward and tell her.
So our donation every year is to help offset the tickets that she's talking about, the first two shows of every month?
The first two performances, every main stage show.
Okay. Five-dollar tickets. Where can you go watch a show for five dollars? And that's all you have to do is prove that you live in the borough, you bring your license, and you get tickets for five dollars. So we appreciate that, we appreciate what you do for the borough, and we want to plead our residents, and here's a check to help you offset that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Well, guess what? Oh. Thank you so much. No problem.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to serve this community. We thank you for your support. Thank you so much.
Just so everybody knows, Amy, that's a check for $10,000.
Thank you.
My name is Amy McElveen, and with me tonight is Mary Jeswaldy. Mary is, does so many things for the community, but she's also the president of the Academic Oversight Committee, which is why I'm here tonight. The AOC, their mission is to support and enhance and accelerate the learning experience of our students here in Bristol Borough attending the public and parochial schools. And we do that in a variety of ways, by bringing in programming, partnering with the Bristol Riverside Theater. We do a variety of things throughout the school year. The reason that we're here tonight is to address the council and ask for your consideration and permission to allow us to use the Public Works Building for one of our two annual fundraisers. Every year, we are, how we deliver the programming is through fundraising, community-based fundraising. We do two annual fundraisers. We do Jazz on the River and the Bristol Fall Classic. The Bristol Fall Classic, the proposed date is Saturday, November 18th. It's the Saturday before Thanksgiving. It's, we've talked to the King George, they've agreed to be the caterer. It involves our, the Academic Oversight Committee coming into the facility on Friday, the day before, and returning again on Sunday to clean up. Friday is to set up, Saturday would be the event, and then Sunday we'd return and clean the venue up. I have spent my whole career working from the private sector, supporting the public sector, working with state and local governments. I am very familiar with public works buildings. I know I've told Ralph and Mr. Dillon that I was super impressed with that facility the first time I went into it. It is so well-designed for maximum efficiency, not just for the public works people that support the community, but it really, when we asked to do this a few years ago, we were amazed at how efficient it was, what a great operation it is. It's so well-designed. It's hard to believe that it's so well-designed for a catering event. I think we've done it there now two or three times. And it's, I mean, our original premise was to knock on the door of some of the historic buildings in town, which we did, but it's a heavy lift. Working in the Public Works Building to stand up this event, which is a Person of the Year and Teacher of the Year format, for us, it's really easy. And I'm here tonight to ask the council for your permission to do it again this year on November 18th.
Absolutely. I don't think anybody would ever, as hard as you, both of you work, we can never say no. And you know what? The Borough guys and the Borough Council was proud to use that building. I mean, you know, we built a state-of-the-art facility, and like you said, it suits a lot of needs.
And who would have thought catering for an event? Yep.
But it shows off the building, it shows the taxpayers what a beautiful building we really have, and, you know, we're glad that you're using it, in my opinion. So I don't think anybody has any reason why we would ever say no to you.
Okay. What, does anyone have any questions? We provide all the, in the past, we've provided all the paperwork to Mr. Dillon, insurance, and some of the other things that he asks for. I can't remember what they are at the moment, but he does ask for a lot.
And the place is a little beautiful when it's done.
Thank you, it really is.
People at home really should come and support it. It's a great event, and it's for a great cause.
I hope, does anyone have any questions for either one of us? Mary's the president.
Hopefully, when we have all the details, we can come back and share them with you and the community.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, we're moving along. Bobby, you and your wife, we have some coming up.
Hi, everyone, council members, community members. My name is Vanessa, and I'm joined here by Bobby Gallagher and Marcus Wright. We are the key stakeholders in the new Bucks County Bulldog Football Organization. We're all residents here in the borough. Our kids attend Borough Schools, and they participate in Borough Rec Sports. And we're thrilled to be here tonight to officially announce the new tackle football program that will be home-based here in Bristol Borough. The Bulldogs are an independently funded organization that is partnering with Erin Antonelli and the Bristol Borough Rec, Mike Poploski, our athletic director, and the school board. And with the support of council leaders, we will be standing this program up this fall. Our goal is to support the kids and the community and provide a feeder program that bridges the gap between the rec football program and the Warriors. In an effort to be fully transparent program, we are openly soliciting for sponsorship donations and applying for grants that will support funding of the program. As a brand-new program, we will need necessary funding to provide all equipment, uniforms, league fees, and other additional costs. We did just receive a notification on being selected for a grant, which is really exciting, but we really don't know what the parameters of that grant is just yet. We have a follow-up call coming soon. Through fundraising efforts to date, we have been able to raise thousands of dollars, which brings us to about 85% to goal for two teams in 2023. We remain in need of community support to raise the additional monies needed to provide this opportunity to our kids. The BCB organization is a fully insured 501(c) nonprofit and will operate with an open-book policy. Our home base, as I mentioned, will be here in Bristol Borough under the rec umbrella, and we also are a USA Football Registered Program. The program will start out small and accept children ages five to 10, up to 30 kids. We are an all-inclusive program that supports equity, boys, girls, no race specific. We want everybody to come and, and join the program as long as they have fun. Registration is currently open, and slots are filling up, but we're looking for more players. We will have an in-person registration in July and look to start practices soon after. So thank you for your time and attention. We're really excited to partner with you guys. Please feel free to ask any questions now, or should they come up in the future?
The only thing I want to say is I did meet prior to tonight's meeting with both of you, and I didn't really have too much to say. You had a lot to say, and I listened. A couple of things that you did say that really impressed me was, at the click of a button, anybody in transparency that you will have financially, at a click of a button without no hesitation, you'll print out anybody who wants to see a report of the income and the expenditures of your program.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's what this council's been trying to accomplish, where there's transparency with anything that we do, because our name is on it. And I know Aaron has been a lifesaver to this borough right now, and is working very hard to uphold this recreation program, but I have a lot of confidence, and I wish you a lot of, a lot of success with this program. I know the two of you will do an outstanding job.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
A question.
Sure.
Could you maybe let us know the contact information in case anyone wants to contribute?
Of course.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Is there a website or?
There is, it's buckscountybulldogs.com. We have, I can make our.
Is that spelled out?
Yes, it is. We do have a Facebook page as well.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's fine.
Mike, you can have our, our personal contact information.
Yeah, that's good. I just wanted to make sure the people, you know, here.
If you email the website over and the contact info, we'll make sure to distribute it to all of council.
Great.
Done deal.
Sure. And we can share, we have a handbook that will go out to all of our coaches that will explicitly go through our codes of conduct. You know, we can send that all over to you, too.
Is there anything like signage or like that goes up? Or I'm just asking, because I know through the years.
So, no, our plan.
There used to be like, oh, you could put your name up or your business or a banner.
So our plan.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Our plan is, we have different sponsorship levels right now, and at particular sponsorship levels, you'll have a place. We're going to have a home and away banner that's going to travel with us. So we're going to have all the logos on a banner that we can actively display at all the games.
Cool, thank you for clearing that.
Yeah.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for realizing that we very much care about programs like this for kids, but also that we have a responsibility to make sure it's done the right way, is really all it comes down to. And it's very clear that you guys are doing it the right way, and I'm glad we've kind of come full circle to where we were, to where we're placed now, where it's, we all understand each other. All we want is the kids have a good time, and for us to be doing the right things for the borough and for the taxpayers as well. So that's great, and this gives me a lot of confidence that that's where this is going, and that's, that's really exciting, and I'm, and I'm very happy to see where this is going. So I want to thank you for that, and I have one minor request.
Sure.
I am the, I and Lorraine are the council people for the east ward, which is right behind the high school. And I know that you plan on using that field back there, right? Is that right?
That would, yes.
I just wanted to make sure I'm right about that.
Yes.
Just please be aware of the neighbors in that area, because that was an issue in the past, and I can already tell you guys are going to be tightly buttoned up with that kind of stuff.
100%.
And that's great. I just wanted to put that on your radar in the beginning, because people might think, you know, that, that it's going to be a similar operation to what it was before.
But just, just so you know, and that was a conversation we had, there will be nobody parked on the path, there will be nobody blocking the path, there will be nobody putting lounge chairs on the path. They will, they have 100% control of what's going on.
I believe that.
And they said, "Don't abolish the program if people override by the way it's going."
Yeah, and actually, that kind of caveats into something else, Ralph. If we were to get, like, lawn signs made to put up along the field line that said, "Please stay behind this line," is that something that we would be able to actively use on a regular basis?
And take them down after practice.
And then take them down afterwards? Yeah, okay.
Because if you leave them, they're going to be missing.
Yeah, of course. No, they would have to come with us.
That practice, I would just put them out saying, you know.
Yeah, stay in front of or behind this point, yeah.
We thought a lot of, like Greg said, a lot of people were unhappy. They couldn't, they were riding bikes, they couldn't get down the path. And like I said, you guys, I think, are going to do a great job.
You guys will take care of that.
Yeah, we definitely want to make everybody happy, for sure. And I did bring with me tonight, and let me know if you want me to give it to you, I do have a copy of our current insurance, and we have the borough listed on as an underinsured. So I can supply that.
So, so before you. So before you guys, well, you could sit, but I just wanted to say a couple things. So for those of you who don't know, I've personally known Bobby Gallagher since my days at St. Joe's, when he was the hawk flapping around during all sporting events. So if anybody knows the hawk, they know that they don't stop flapping anytime they're in costume, which, you know, will tell you within itself how hard of a worker this guy is. But also, Bob became a resident of Bristol just through like a Facebook post that he responded, that he was interested in a house. And since moving to the borough, he's been 100% involved in the community, and so has Vanessa. So I know they're going to do an awesome job with this program. I mean, their son works at a local restaurant, they're always involved in the community. If you go down Rackliff Street, you'll see them on their porch all the time. So I, I really look forward to what this program has to offer. I know that, as you are aware, it's a Sunday stroll. I personally, I was heading to Eatree just for a cocktail, but it ended up costing me $500 donation for the Bulldogs. And I'm going to put my dad on the spot to match my donation and personally give you another $500. So he, he agreed earlier that he'll match the donation, so you could have a total of $1,000 from the both of us, because I know you're going to do an awesome job with the program. So best of luck, and if you need anything, you always know how to get in touch.
Appreciate it.
Great, yeah. Rest in peace. You know, we're looking for connection, so.
A couple of my personal friends today called me, because there are people out soliciting for you. And what, they want to make sure that this is the right program that they're donating to. So I know you're going to have that until that's resolved, but you're going to be getting some more money from a couple of my friends.
That's wonderful, thank you so much.
And what's the name of the?
Bucks County Bulldogs.
I thought I heard Bulldogs.
Yep.
Our rivalry forever. When you met the Bristol High, and it was Bristol High against the Bulldogs, it was always like, "Good luck to you."
Thank you.
Thank you.
And everything you're working at really is through the school board, because it's their fields, it's their, all that. So whatever deal you work with them is between the two of you, and we'll try to do whatever we can to help. I know Brian's heavily involved in, in the football program, he's involved in the flag football program with Aaron, so I don't know how many guys you've got in that program right now.
There's well over 100.
Yes.
They have 140 kids, they have five coaches personally, that's in. Football? We have 140 kids and five coaches.
From their, from just their, their entourage.
From your entourage.
Yeah, so they have four coaches.
So it sounds like you guys are all on the right track. You got a feeder program that's coming in.
It's a new energy integration.
I think you got a happy council, and like I said, the best thing you ever said to me is, "I press a button, and we'll give you anything you want at any time." So as long as that's the case, you could come here anytime.
Thank you guys so much.
Any questions, or anybody have anything else for them? Good luck.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public participation would like to come to the podium? Depends, Paul, participation. Okay, Greg, what do you have?
Not much. Just on that note, I'm excited to get started with flag football. I am coaching one of the teams that my son and daughter are on.
At our time.
Oh, yes, that's right. I sent you guys a email, I'm sorry. And that's going to be exciting. My daughter, you know, she might not be, have the competitive edge, but she'll have a good time.
She's an answer, isn't she?
But she's a lot of things, football player's not one of them, but, but we're looking forward to that. And it's, and I just, you know, in, just being part of this for the last two and a half weeks, I've been very impressed by, by everyone that's involved. Harold Wright and Tyree, and, you know, Brian and Marcus, and obviously Aaron, and, you know, I have to admit, we've had, we've had energy behind programs before, and it kind of goes and it fades, and it just does not feel that way. And I'm really excited about that, so I want to thank you guys for all that work. My kids are very excited. I also just wanted to mention that I met with the, I don't remember if I said this last meeting or not, but I met with the head builder and a couple other people, Mr. Dillon, at Riverview, just to kind of look at the property behind. And within a week, maybe two, after that meeting, they installed the benches that we were talking about, and it looks really nice back there if you walk along the path. They're really doing a nice job. And the guy, you know, I didn't feel like he was giving me lip service, and when we talked, he said, "We're definitely cleaning this up," and, and he had already started moving on it. So it looks really nice back there. If you want to take a walk, there's now benches along the river in the east ward, where Riverview is, where you can sit and just look at the water. It's really nice. So I was happy to see that, and I'm excited about whatever else there is to come. So that's all I have.
Brian?
All right. I was been working with Marcus from the beginning with the football program, and I'm happy to see that you guys came a long way, like, one number of success from you guys. I'm happy for you.
Thank you, Brian.
Maria?
No, I don't have anything at this time. I've been pretty much, anything that I've had, I contacted Mr. Dillon on. So I just want to thank Mr. Dillon and the Public Works guys, that every time I do call, make a phone call or send out an email for anything that needs to be taken care of, it gets taken care of right away, so.
Thank you. Louis?
And I just wanted to mention that the Bristol High School girls softball team went to the eighth round at the state playoffs, and Bristol Borough had six students compete in the state championship for track and field. Bishop Commonwealth Egan freshman Megan Werner competed in the one-mile and two-mile races. Bishop Commonwealth Egan Jr., Nevin Yavis, competed in the triple jump. And Bristol High School senior Angelise Cantiello competed in the long jump. And the Bristol High four-by-800 relay team was senior Jacob Walker, senior Aiden Quatrochi, sophomore Aiden Quatrochi, and freshman Jasper Faustino. This was the first four-by-800 appearance for Bristol High School since 1970. And the three Bristol High School seniors are graduating Tuesday night, and these three are the first, second, third in their GPA, in their class ranking, GPA. So it shows that Bristol's doing a good job with their student athletes, and many coming up in the future also. I wanted to mention, Lower Bucks Hospital is sponsoring the American Red Cross Blood Drive on Thursday, June 13th, between 7:30 a.m. and 5:15 p.m. Appointments are recommended, but you can walk in. If you call for an appointment, it's 215-759-300, or visit redcrossblood.org. Also this month, the Grundy Library is going to have their opening gala on June 24th. It's a Saturday, and this will be the official opening of the library after a long, long time being closed for renovations and the pandemic, and it's going to be a good event. You can go online and check out.
What's the date of that again, Louis?
June, June, Saturday, June 24th. And the last thing I had is I wanted to thank Bob Marquis from Marquis Construction Services and the Zolman family, which are the owners of BC Packaging and the old Simon and Schuster Building. They had some, Zolmans have been very cooperative with the community. I know Joe's had good relationships with them for, since they moved into town, they've helped with our, some of the fire and police issues for training. And someone hit their fence, and the gate was knocked down, and, and Bob Marquis had his people go over and, and cleared it out, just to beautify that area again. They were very helpful to the Grundy Library during the, the re-roofing project. We had to store things on, you know, off-site, and they were, they were very good to the, to the Grundy Foundation, as they've been very good to the borough with letting us throughout the parades there, or the Anheuser-Busch Flightsdale. They've been very cooperative with the community. I wanted to thank them and thank Bob Marquis for what they've done recently. That's, that's it for me.
Just a couple of quick things. Once again, the Mill Street with the businesses, two more businesses are coming in, a cupcake. It's actually going to be off of Mill Street, but it's starting to continue around, which is great. And also a vegan-style food slash deli. My point with that is, as fast as something becomes available, it's taken. So that's a good thing. The other thing I just want to mention is, you know, the traffic with me being on Mill Street, I see every day, we're going to be coming from all over. So we're really proud of that in the limelight, and I just want to make sure that, look, anytime you can reach out and knock on Design Works and say, "Hey, I just, I have trash bags in the, in the alley, because a lot of the people on the street are like, 'I'll empty this.'" You know, just, I know the borough's very busy, but sometimes if we have an overcrowd, you know, somebody puts a pizza box in there, and we're, you can't put anything else in there. So just putting that out there, but just keeping it beautified and looking as great as it always does, and people are just loving it, so. It just is really, and we were all acknowledged as finally the part of the River towns and, and all that, which is great, which is nice to see. That's it.
First of all, I would like to thank our councilman, Brian, for being involved in the rec programs that we accumulated and started. Lorraine and Greg and I all sit on the same board, but sometimes we can't make all these meetings, and all we count on is Brian, who goes and tells us what's going on. So thank you, Brian. Thank you guys and everyone out there who's trying to do this foot, or is going to do this football program, because we just want the kids to be able to have everything else every other town has, and then some, because we have good kids in this town. But sometimes people take it the wrong way, and they don't, they want to be secretive, and we're not into that. We want to know what's going on to protect our kids. So thank you. I wish you all the luck in the world. The only other two things I have is Mr. Dillon. Across Golden Eagle, that lot is way out of control with weeds. If we could get somebody to clean it out. The only thing that upsets me is that the only time to clean it out is when I complain. And it shouldn't be like that. It should be cleaned constantly. So it's summertime now, it looks horrible. So if someone could take care of that, I know every time I complain, somebody does. And then my condolences to Rachel Akins, whose husband, Don Akins, they live at Grundy Towers, and. they live at Grundy Towers and they were great constituents of ours and they helped out election time and they're just good people. And it's sad to see someone go that worked so hard with us to keep the town going in the right directions. So my condolences to Doc, Don Akins, and we were there. Most of us went to the funeral, Joe including, and, you know, hopefully he rests in peace.
Don't forget the concerts have started with the Bristol Lions on every Sunday. I just wanted to put that out.
And that's it.
I apologize because I went the opposite way. Usually I go to you first. Chief, what do you have?
I just want to remind everybody that schools are letting out this week. So the kids are going to be out there during the day early. Just pay attention. Please stop at the stop signs, slow down. The officers are out there and let's have a great summer.
Yes.
Any quality of life issues that arise, please just call us and let us know. We'll mount, take care of it for you.
Thanks, Chief.
So first I'd like to start off and just kind of reiterate what Joe just said. There's going to, when you drive around the borough during the weekends, especially during the weekends, there are people everywhere. You see people in the path. You see people down Rapple Tree, Hill Street, Pond Street, all over the place down Trenton Avenue. Just be careful when you're driving. Stop at the stop signs, stop at the path crosswalks. Be conscious of what you're doing because there are a lot, a lot more people in town this time of year with the weather being nice. And honestly, like our officers are doing a phenomenal job patrolling. You see a whole different, you know, for the most part, I would say it's not completely curbed, but we see a lot more people being aware of speed limits and stopping at stop signs, especially outside my office where these two clothes really make it didn't exist. So I just want to thank the chief and the police force for the job they're doing with that. I also want to, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think they, you know, need more accommodation is, you know, the people that are involved in rec. You know, when I was coaching CYO this year, we had some practices at Schneider and I would see the hundreds of kids coming in to play basketball. I remember just now there were 147 kids that played flag football. I mean, that's just a credit to the people that get involved. When good people get involved to help the children, good things happen. And it organically continues to grow because people want to be a part of something good. When you do good for the kids, people want to step up and help you out. So, you know, I think you're doing a phenomenal job and, you know, the tackle football program is spinning off of that. It's just, it's going to continue to get better and better every year. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the time and effort you put into that because I know it's not easy. I also want to say thank you to the people that run the Sunday Stroll. I was there yesterday. It was another awesome Sunday stroll. Very well attended. We had no issues. You know, if you haven't been to the borough for a Sunday stroll, there are more to come. And I recommend you get down there to visit the restaurants, the food trucks, the vendors. You know, there's a lot going on down there. And I think some people were scared away because the first one was so crowded and overpacked that they think they can't get to anywhere. They've been very well attended, but not to that degree. So we welcome more people to come back to the Sunday Stroll and experience the restaurants and things we have to offer in the borough. Coming up, we have some events I want to announce. We have the Personal Works Theater Gala. And this year, the gala has a garden theme to it. You know, what they're saying is casual and you can wear your cavalry boots. So I think a lot of people get scared away from, you know, quote unquote gala because they think you got your cups, you got to dress up. It's, you know, it's a lot involved. Come to the gala this year. One, it's honoring Bill Pezza from Raising the Bar and Ken Stephan, the CEO of William Penn. But two, it's just an awesome event that supports the theater. It's going to be held outside behind the theater, which is, you know, a great venue right there in Lyons Park. And you will not be disappointed by purchasing tickets to attend the gala. And there's a discount if you purchase a table of 10. So you can go on the Bristol Riverside Theater website for more information regarding the gala. Also, we have Celtic Day coming up. That's going to be on the 25th from noon to 6:00 p.m. down in Lyons Park. So we have a weekend filled with the BRT Gala on Friday, the 23rd. We have the Library Grand reopening on the 24th and we have Celtic Day on the 25th. So it should be a really good weekend in the borough, you know, in a couple of months. The last thing I wanted to mention was Greg mentioned Riverfront North over there where the townhouses were built. Well, they broke around on the condos. Ninety-six units, six buildings of 16. And yes, I may have a personal interest because, you know, my company is fortunate enough to be listing them. But another project like that, when you have someone investing millions of dollars into the Riverfront and Bristol Borough, that is just, you know, something to say of the leadership and the people in the borough and the support it's getting when you're selling, you know, $350,000 plus condos. The borough has become a destination for people to live. I see it in my professional career and everything I do. And I see it just walking around, talking to people. And you're always wondering where they came from, why did they move here? And they always say, "I just love it here. It's just a great place. I can't believe I didn't discover it sooner." So, you know, Bristol has become a destination. It's become the gem of Bucks County. We always, you know, the people that born and raised, they're new to it, knew it, always loved. And now it's really coming to fruition with everything you see going all around town. And like Michael said, you can't keep a storefront open on Mill Street and it's filled immediately. So I'm just proud to be from here. I'm proud to be the mayor and I'm proud to work with all these people sitting up here because most of you have been here a lot longer than I have. And all that that's going on in town is a testament to your work.
Thank you.
I got a couple of things. First of all, you guys cost me $500 tonight.
I think you have to raise some, plenty of stuff for that.
I have one more thing. So I just have one more thing. Car show that was scheduled for Wednesday, June 7th was canceled due to poor air quality. It is now rescheduled for this Wednesday, the 14th, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. So the car show that was originally scheduled for last Wednesday, the 7th, is now rescheduled for this Wednesday, June 14th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And it says the location is the Mill Street parking lot in the Delaware River in Lyons Park.
Is your mic working?
There's no light on. I'm just kidding.
All right. So a couple of things. One, we had a community block grant that was approved for $460,000 to do some handicap curves. And most of the curves are going to be done on, I'm looking for my notes. Beaver Street. So Beaver Prospect, Beaver Headley Street, Beaver Madison, Beaver Street and Second Avenue, Beaver Street and Third Avenue, Beaver Street and Jefferson Avenue. We're trying to do them intersections for handicap compliance and we did give $460,000. The other thing, I don't know if you remember, over a year ago, I sat here and said that I met with a couple of people that I'm personally friends with from Septa and it's coming to fruition where we're going to get a $20 million renovation to our train station. That'll be coming up. That should take place over the next couple, you know, couple of years. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but they're committed to redoing our train station and the people, it comes down to, you know, people showing an interest in this town. And it's a lot of money to put into a train station. We have pictures. I don't know if Matt can show them eventually.
He might have one.
Matt may have one. So they're in our pocket, but there's going to be handicap grants going up, they're redoing the platforms. So there's going to be a lot of improvement you're going to see over the next few years. New lighting. We also got $60,000 grant to study the flooding under Green Lane. We're trying to get this finally resolved. So we got $60,000. Amanda, you're aware of that whole program, thanks to you and Kurt and Gilmore, that make things like this possible also. JDM will be mobilizing on the week of July 3rd to start the road program that we started. And I think it's probably going to take a couple of weeks. So the paving should start maybe July 10th. And we'll get it done real quick. There are streets that we took off the list because Aqua is now coming in to run some new mains down some of the streets, but we're doing what we can. The ball field, the big hardball field, that parking lot is getting redone. It's getting all new blacktop. They're putting drainage in now. So you're going to see a big difference down there. And we've met, I personally met with a clock company. Where do you come out? Connecticut. Because this clock, one downstairs and the one on the building, have not worked right in years. So we finally found a company that came here from Connecticut and the clock on the, the four side of clock is now working. These two clocks are going to have a new mechanism put in it. So even if we lose power, no matter what happens, they'll automatically reset with the daylight savings and everything. So believe it or not, what's behind that is one double A little battery, a plastic, in a little plastic like you would find a clock you bought from Walmart. So I guess at some point, that was the easiest way to fix them. So we're going to do them right. They're going to get powered up. There's going to be a computer hooked up to them for daylight savings. The savings box are original. I don't know. So we want to do whatever we can. And it's not expensive to do. So both clocks, this one and the one when you first come in and the one on the roof is going to get redone. We're trying to get the exterior of the building all repainted again and cleaned up. And we want to repaint the entire inside of the building. We had some roof leaks. You can see one there. If you walk out of Public Gas Door, you see one there. So we're looking for people that, you know, right now, as a contractor, you can't find people to do anything. Everybody's just so busy. So we're looking for, this will probably be going out to bid shortly, the exterior and the interior of the building. So does anybody have any questions?
I would just want to say one thing about the, the study for Green Lane is, obviously that's welcomed. One of the other things we eventually need to do, I think Mr. Dillon would probably agree with this, is find someone that can make a final decision on whose responsibility is what. Because I know Penn Dot still tries to put some things in our court that we feel like are not in our court. So as we go through that process, I think it'll be good. And that might be a question for you too, though.
I think we have our, I don't think Penn Dot's not agreeing.
Right. So that's, so in that situation, something's got to come to head at some point, right? In the sense of if Penn Dot doesn't agree with us, that maybe at some point in time we have to push it further?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's a problem there that could end up needing to come on. So I would say at some point, we're going to want to jump over.
Yeah. I'm not talking about tomorrow. I'm saying while, while this process goes on, I think at some point in time, we need to.
Let's see what it affects.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
I just had one more thing. So I was looking at the borough website on my phone just to make sure I didn't miss any events. This upcoming Sunday is the Lower Bucks County Juneteenth Celebration, which will be held in our Lyons Park. And that'll start at 10:00 a.m. and run until 6:00 p.m. So Sunday to 18th will be the Lower Bucks County Juneteenth Celebration in Lyons Park from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Now I'm done.
So before we get into our regular meeting that the mayor has mentioned about honoring Bill Pezza and Ken, but I just want to say something about Pezza, Mr. Pezza, Bill, whatever you want to call him. When we started this a long time ago, we always said that this council can't do everything. We need help from everybody. Like, help from Amy and Mary and help from this organization. So we're only like a tool to try to guide everybody. And growing up in this town and, you know, I'm 67 years old, Mill Street was dead. There's no question. There was, you know, nobody ever thought it would come back. And he did work tirelessly every day to make that street what it is today. I know Michael was involved and Craig Whitaker was involved in Raising the Bar, but he definitely was the driving force behind making this town and Mill Street come back the way it did. I mean, he watered flowers. I told him the other day, "You're crazy. You're out there trying to water flowers." But that's him. I mean, you know, once he gets something in his mind, and I don't think we could honor anybody more worthy of being honored than. And I know it's your dad, but he does an outstanding job. So.
I agree.
I'm glad that he was chosen to be honored for, be one of the persons this year. So Bill, we'll all be there if anybody else wants to go, you know, buy a ticket online. Okay, let's get into our regular council meeting. Jim, do you have anything? Why say?
I'm just going to ask Amanda, if you don't mind, to touch on the three grant applications. So I just want to. I have three, four, and seven on the agenda. And I just want to, I suppose, there's significant application.
Sure. Yeah, we have three applications on the agenda. The, the first one is motion number three for the Maple Beach Road Trailhead Improvements. That would be to connect a trail from the new, under construction bridge right at Maple Beach by the Public Works Building and connect a sidewalk or a path to the canal terminus marker near the, the top of the parking lot. We'll also hopefully be able to construct a few parking spaces along Maple Beach Road for some overflow parking during festivals and when the parking lot fills up. And we'll be essentially a trailhead connection point for some future trail connections. I know the East Coast Greenway is still interested in bringing a trail through Maple Beach or down Old Route 13. So hopefully that will spur some interest in the future for that one. The second grant application is for the Adams Hollow Creek Streambank Stabilization. That's in the amount of $460,000 for that request. This is to piggyback off of a project that actually the NRCS just completed off of North Cedar Street along Adams Hollow Creek. So they did a stream bank stabilization project, put in some big block retaining walls and some riprap stabilization along that property. So we would be able to continue that stabilization upriver, up, up the creek and down the creek with that grant application. And the third grant application on the agenda for tonight is for the additional money needed to complete the swale behind Otter Street and Green Street. We, the borough was awarded grant money two years ago now, I think, for a portion of the project. So that $90,000 would take us to be able to complete the entire project. I know Councilman Rodriguez, we had walked, again, maybe a year or two ago now. So this would be to get the rest of that grant money. That, if that's the case, it would be fully funded by grant programs and would be no cost to borough residents.
That's great.
Any questions for Amanda? Max, Amanda. Okay, so is there anybody in public participation for the next meeting? Hence, public participation, number two on the agenda.
So President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for May 1st, 2023, and May 8th, 2023, to accept the treasurer's report for April 2023, to accept the fire chief's report for May 2023, to accept the inspection department report for April and May of 2023, to accept the public works report for May of 2023, accept police report for May of 2023, and accept the hard report for May of 2023.
Second, I just, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize resolution, a resolution authorizing applying for the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant through the Commonwealth Financing Authority and Designating Officials to execute documents in furtherance of this request in the amount of $250,000 for the Maple Beach Road Trailhead Improvements.
So, Mr. Petrich, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number four.
So President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution authorizing applying for the Flood Mitigation Program Grant through the Commonwealth Financing Authority Designating Officials to execute documents in furtherance of this request in the amount of $420,000 for the Adams Hollow Creek Streambank Stabilization Improvements.
Second, by Mr. Gorham, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number five.
I have to abstain from that.
So we got one on the session tomorrow.
Because I had to, I have property adjacent to that and as part of the grant, the grant application, I had to give a letter supporting the program as a property. application, I had to give a letter supporting the program as a property owner, so I don't think it's appropriate to...
That's fine.
... put the vote on it. Thank you.
Mr. President, we have two different boroughs. What's the amount?
Four hundred.
Sixty or twenty?
Four hundred and sixty.
Was that a motion that you made?
I said four twenty.
It's a typo on the agenda, so it should be four sixty, I thought.
Do you want me to restate that bill, or?
No, just to have a vote.
So we got a motion for four hundred and sixty thousand. Second by Mr. Gorman. Mr. Gorman, you abstain from voting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to do a motion for approval of agreement with county of Bucks for grant in the amount of $420,000 for installation of the ADA Curve Rents Project B/23/14.
Second by Mrs. Robert, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, now number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to authorize a resolution to award the contract to Passport Labs Incorporated for the software license and service agreement for mobile payments for parking meters.
By Mr. Gorman, questions or comments?
All of them do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number seven.
So President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the resolution authorizing applying for Growing Greener Plus Grant through the P.A. Department of Environmental Protection, and designating officials to execute documents in furtherance of this request in the amount of $90,000 for the Howell Street Vegetated Swale.
Second by Mrs. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize request for withdrawal of the Bristol Commerce Park subdivision plans dated December 9th, 2022, per request letter dated May 22nd, 2023, from Jennifer Altman of Kim Lee Horn and Associates.
Second by Mr. Gorman, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, number nine.
So President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize cooperation agreement with the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority dated May 19th, 2023, for reimbursement of $190,000 for administration and reimbursement of flood-related costs.
Second, Mrs. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Rodriguez, second by Mrs. Figaro. Meeting adjourned.